Instead of, you know, playing this game of we're going to close it, we're not going to close it, do this, do that, I would say we continue to fund it. And if those of you believe that we need to have additional funding beyond the current level of operations, then put that on the ballot if that's what you want. Also, with respect to the roads, if you believe that we need to spend millions to immediately get our local roads up to a higher level of functionality, I think we should have a more comprehensive discussion that includes the possibility of issuing municipal bonds in lieu of a tax, a direct tax. I mean, I know that there's both a tax involved, but I think we need to, you know, if we're going to go down that road, just look at all of the options.
Anybody else? Councilman McKinnis?
Well, I had an opportunity to review what Councilmember Slater put forth when I received it in the email. And I mean, I think in terms of a compromise, it's quite a bit of a compromise from what we've discussed in the past. And I think that there's validity to the fact that there are still some question marks hanging out there. And I think that there's some validity to the example that's been said in the community where we're not much for pre-planning. And it's really as an issue as upon us, I think that's when we're really seeing a response. I think that there are quite a few things that could happen in terms of our budget before it even starts to snow again. But the funding for the library is set to be zeroed out as of July 1st. And I can't say that I would agree with the statement that right now, with the numbers that I've been looking at since we started the budget sessions, that that money is available. And essentially, we're using fund balance to balance our budget. So, the situation is upon us in terms of the library. I think that the community has definitely come forward. And I know we hear people on both sides of the issue, but the community voice that I'm hearing today versus a community voice that I even heard last November or the February 4th is different. I mean, we all receive the same amount of emails, even if you just want to take the last three days alone. And I'm not basing my decision just based on emails. But I think the community voice is different than it has been, and this is an issue that's upon us. So, I think in some respects, I can agree with what you're saying. There are things that will change with the library issue, and funding for the library is upon us. And I'm not seeing the money that's needed in our budget to reallocate in order to fund the library. And quite frankly, I would feel a lot better if this issue was separated out from everything else and they received the funding. I think that there are a lot of compromises that are even within Councilmember Slater's proposal in terms of it being a dedicated millage, it being for what it would take to run a reduced level of service library. I'm not looking to have a library that we had a couple of years ago. I'm looking to maintain a full-service library that would allow us to have our interactions through state libraries that give us all the benefits that we know. But it's still going to be a reduced level of service. So, I see what's before us as a compromise in my own mind. I mean, I think that it's something that I could support. I think that there are many other discussions that we're going to be having. I'm not comfortable with the idea of reducing our police department by the number of positions that are allocated. If we add four back, or if we don't add four back, neither one of them are really a depiction of a police department that I would want. But it's not time to have that discussion. And we need more information, and I think we're going to get it. I think that the time is upon us to do something about the library. And I do think that this is a compromise, and so it's something that I would be willing to consider.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
I agree with Laureen. I absolutely think that the time of dithering has ended. And we tried to force this discussion a year ago, and weren't able to. And so now, we're down two minutes to have this discussion. I appreciate the degree of compromise that is felt to be in this proposal. And I do disagree with my colleagues on either side. We don't have enough time before the library closes to figure out where you think that money is and to get a consensus to put it elsewhere in this budget. That just isn't there. You've been trying for months to get that done. I laid out how it could be done, and we got no buy-in on that. So, for the time being, if the goal is to have a degree of useful library services in this town, we have to fund it. And we have to fund it for not six weeks. You have to fund it for at least a quarter because even if you have an August vote, and that's a whole nother piece, even if you have an August vote, that's $225,000 there to fund it for, $223 and change, I think, is what you said, to fund it for that first month. And then you have to fund it to close appropriately. So, you have to fund it for another two months to close appropriately. That's what Kathy and her staff are supposed to be doing right here while we're sitting here doing this. So, you're looking at a quarter. You're looking at somewhere around $700,000. That's the money we have to find. That's the money we have to find literally before next Monday night, is that $700,000 I don't believe that a special election is ever cost-effective. I understand the cost efficiency of a quarter versus six months. The election itself, let us not delude ourselves, is not cost-efficient. It's extra. And it's, I think, $90-some-thousand extra. And I have a little heartburn with that. And I have to balance that with the additional $600,000 if you wanted to keep the library open all that time. And again, I mean, I said to you all in April, it was not my goal to keep the library open this six weeks. It was my goal to force this discussion for you all to figure out how to fund the library or some library services. I will tell you the other thing that I hear with a large degree of resonance from both the pro-library people and the anti-tax people. And that is, the rest of us have had to cut things in our lives, and the rest of us have had to cut how we do things. Why is it that the city believes that even core services should be held to a 2005 standard? And that is where I agree that if you add all of these statistical numbers in their very best light, and that means that all of the people who told us that they would, said that they would, said that they were leaning toward, and as you know, I know from personal experience, that's not exactly guaranteed, if all of those people vote yes on whatever figure you figure out, okay, then you get some library service. I think that we are overreaching to want a 65-hour-plus library. I believe that today's 55-hour library is that for which we should think about funding and let any future tax increases take care of adding hours or services. To that end, that's why I started the discussion with Mr. Lamarato, our current one mill, according to the city tax assessor, would be worth about 4.48, I think, in next year's budget. And over the next four years, it's going to lose roughly $1.2 million in value. So, even to fund a 55-hour library, you're looking at somewhere where you tend to lose. But you have to allow for that loss once you go out. I'm concerned with your proposal of ten years, Mayor. I think that that is part of what hurt the Friends' proposal in November. I think that it was too long a time for people to believe that things would not rebound. And if what we know is, turns out to be true, that property values will continue to decline in Troy, our commercial property will continue to give us a hit, then in five years, if we have to go back, let those people decide if they, once again, want library services. But I really think that if this council would choose to go out for any millage increase of over five years, we would be perceived as overreaching. I agree with Councilman Slater, one thing at a time. And we don't know what the savings are going to come out to be, so I'm kind of with him there.
Well, there's pluses and minuses to going for five years or 10 years as far as security. Five years is what we asked for when we asked for the general operating millage in February of 2010. And also, too, I think it's a valid point of the amount, whether we want to go back to the full-service, award-winning library that we had previously with that full funding, or do we want to go to what we have now, which is 55 hours, closed on Saturdays, and less funding for materials. That budget was cut in half, is that correct, Mrs. Ross?
Close to half.
Close to half, okay, all right. And I think that's where, that's the point where we are, to get a majority of council to agree to have a millage vote on the library with the appropriate dollar amount and the discussion that I'm glad we're having, and I think that the citizenry is glad we're having it also. And that we need to reach some kind of determination so that we can decide what we're going to do with the budget. When we decide sooner, it is more cost-effective, even though there is a cost involved in it. It also is, gives some relief to the anxiety in the community about the library, what's happening, which I think sometimes you can't even put a dollar factor on that. And third, we've collected a lot of data and information, learned a lot in the past year. So, I'm glad we're getting there on our discussion. And I think it's been helpful to have resolutions in front, proposals in front of us, and information dollar-wise so that we can make a determination this evening. Now, when it comes up on a council referral later on, on the next meeting, we'll have had a chance to think through all these things. The council may decide at that point that they're ready to move a resolution forward. They may decide at that point they want to postpone it to the 16th, which puts it on the same night as the budget hearing. But a determination needs to be made either tonight or on the 16th in order to get it done and get it to the county in time. So, we do have a tight timeframe here.
Councilman Harlock?
Actually, one of the concerns I think we all should have is if we're going to fund the library, then we really should take it back to, because didn't we not start losing privileges as library patrons on the 15th of March, is that not correct? Not necessarily with our own library.
I'm sorry, I'm afraid I don't understand.
15th of March?
The 15th of March is when we were not able to allow patrons to place holds through the Melcat system, which is the statewide interlibrary loan.
Right. I think we need to, at least through the election, I would say we need to actually have all of our privileges as library patrons.
I, to be honest with you, Councilman Harlock, I don't know if we would be able to do that because, because Mel is a statewide interlibrary loan system. The March 15th date was determined by Mel, not by me, because as Troy loans out its material to other libraries across the state and Troy patrons receive materials throughout, from libraries throughout the state, the concern of those libraries was getting their material back before the Troy library closed. My concern was to get Troy library's material back. I do not know with the situation being uncertain as to the library's future, if the Melcat system would allow us to rejoin temporarily.
And that's really my point, is that we should take closing the library off the table. If you want to have an election to enhance the funding of the library, then do so, but, you know, stop this whole discussion about closing the library. And also discuss the issue about, you know, fund balance utilization. If you look back three years, we've only used $850,000 of fund balance. And the three years prior to that, I'm sorry, $750,000. And the three years prior to that, $250,000. And on a percentage basis, because you can't, you can't say that 2012 has allocated funds because we haven't approved the budget. So, we're going to come in based on what we have here, $12.3 million on a $55 million projected budget. Therefore, we're at, we're at the same fund balance as a percent of expenditures as we were in 2003. So, I don't buy into the premise that we don't have funding, you know? And I don't buy into the premise that we need to close the library to balance the budget. And I absolutely refuse to be pushed in that direction. You know, if the four of you who voted for the last year's budget want to continue to close the library and blame the minority on us, and you want to call it a compromise when you force something onto the table that we, again, don't agree to, that's not a compromise. I don't understand why it has to be in August. I don't understand why you have to close the library. I don't agree to that premise.
Anyone else from council on this subject? Yeah, Councilman Slater?
I guess I just, I'm somewhat disappointed that, you know, we really haven't come anywhere on this table as far as compromise goes. And it seems like we've had square one here. As long as there's going to be people from this council telling people that there's money to fund the library, I don't know that we're ever going to come to compromise. And it's unfortunate, that's why I say, very unfortunate.
Mayor? Councilman Harlock?
Well, that's why if you do a tax increase, you have to have it as a general tax increase. And that way, future city council can adjust it and its allocation according to the needs of the city. You know, say, for example, we had a compromise and it included a tax increase in November, then it should be general. That way, if the tax is too high, future city council isn't bogged down by a 10-year or a 5-year. Or, if you really want to do it, you could have a one-year. That way, you could actually adjust it upward if you need to, or downward if you need to.
And I support that, but I don't believe that's the consensus in the community. I think the community wants a dedicated millage and wants to know where, that's why I proposed that. If I had my daughters, I would agree with you that the general millage would be better. But I'm telling you, I don't get that sense in the community. They don't trust this council to take that money and use it where it needs to be. They want dedicated funding. That's why I put it on this proposal. That is not my idea. That's a compromise.
The reason that I suggested a dedicated millage is because in the other communities that have passed millages, it's been dedicated millage, and that many people were saying they would vote for a reasonable millage for the library, but they want it dedicated, they wanted it separate from the rest of the budget. Mrs. Ross has asked for the floor.
Madam Mayor, I appreciate your time and the indulgence of council. Well, I just would like to mention to all of you and to the, to those people of Troy who might be watching, there are certain services, if you do decide to have an election, whether it's August or November, there are certain services that, such as the Melcat system, that we are not really able to restart while the library's future is uncertain. Another service is our magazine subscriptions and our database subscriptions. We have allowed many of them to lapse. We haven't renewed because up until a few weeks ago, we were in getting ready to be in closed-down mode. So, I want to mention that the service that people can take advantage of at the library today is not even the service that they had two months ago. And that level of service, such as it is, would continue until council makes a decision simply because if the library is going to close, we simply cannot shift so quickly. You know, we have many people calling and asking if they can place holds on material. And we've said, we're really sorry, but we're not able to do that because if council decided not to fund the library and the library is going to close, we need to progress down that closing road. And to start up operations again just prolongs that. So, I appreciate your indulgence to let me say that. I felt like it's something you really need to be aware of.
That's why I'd be saying sooner rather than later, because if a millage is approved, a dedicated millage is approved for the library, then there's that certainty that it could be collected in the winter tax bill, and those things that people are asking for can be uploaded again into, into the budget. Council, since we're coming almost to 7:50, and we promised that we'd have the 10-minute time for public comment, and then anyone who did not get to speak up till 8 o'clock, because we have to stop the special meeting, we have a start and stop time. We can't extend it on like we can with the other meeting. I'm going to call with council's indulgence, I'll call on the three people that gave us cards.
There's more over here.
Okay. I don't know if we'll have time for all these, but I will tell you that if you hand in a card and you don't get to speak here, I will call on you first at the 8:30 meeting during public comment time, you will have a chance to speak. So, we're no way saying that people can't speak, it's just that we're going to take. So, Bruce Bloomingdale, you put in the first card, would you like to stand up and talk? No, it's not, you just have to talk here.
I can't repair the statement, I'm going to leave, but it does cover some of the things we talked about. First of all, I want the council to understand that me as a citizen, I support a full-service library that we can all be proud of. I consider a library with funding is both adequate and dependable, which will promote long-term planning and continued excellence. I'm going to hurry on to say that really, the library may be a concern, but I see the city as a bigger concern. And there are things going on in this city that are really sort of sad. I appreciate the council's effort, Mayor, I appreciate your effort to bring this to resolution, and I think that it's sad that we can't. I'm going to read the notes I had on the last two millage proposals. Most of my remarks were in regard to the police department, so it may sound a little erratic. We all know the two millages failed. I think the first one failed due to a flawed presentation of the options available, was presented by city council, city administration. That may not be my personal feeling, but it is a community feeling. I think the second reason is voter apathy and ignorance, despite a number of public information meetings held to educate us, the voters were held. We didn't take advantage of that, same on us. But by and large, as far as I'm concerned, the best I can say, and I can read a budget as well as anybody sitting at this table, I ran jobs that ran into millions of dollars instead of on a pension fund that was worth $500 million. I can read a balance sheet, I can read financial statements, and I'm going to tell you, there is no doubt in my mind that there is no money in the budgets that you have to fund the library. Yet, we got the Troy Citizens United campaigning heavily against that first 1.9%. What a disservice that was to this city. The 1.9, the 0.9 mill for the library failed primarily for the same reason. I'm no longer calling them Troy Citizens United, they're the Tax Cutters United. That's what they believe, and they destroyed that 0.9 millage with the disinformation, the lies and letters that they put out in opposition to it. Again, what a terrible disservice to this community. You councilmen that are supported by the Tax Cutter United need to wake up and face the facts. The preponderance of facts covered in this budget report and confirmed by outside sources tell us we have cut too deep. Cuts have actually damaged the city's ability to provide essential city services like police protection, let alone fund the library. So, to continue down the tax fighter lane, hand in hand with the TCU, will appear to be some kind of blind, stubborn, idealistic quest driven by nothing more, nothing less than ideology. Without a doubt, it will be seen as, for what it exactly is, another disservice to this city. You know, it's showtime, people. You need to vote on this. You forget one thing in your conversation, the citizens of this town ask for the opportunity to vote on a millage for the library. I'm concerned about this city in its totality, the police department, the roads and what have it. But I think you would do yourself a service by following the proposal that Councilman Slater put on the table, put, make this a one-time issue. It's important to the community. The library is important to me, but you know what? I don't use it. But I see the value to me as a citizen for it being here, and for my children, and my grandchildren. If you'll put that on a ballot, much the way that Councilman Slater proposed it, you'll do yourself a service. You'll start re-establishing this perceived lack of confidence and trust in you as board You do the community a favor. It's absolutely ludicrous that we stand here two or three years after the financial disaster that this whole country has experienced, and worse still, I think the word is dithering. That's exactly what it is. And I think if you fail to move, there are going to be a whole bunch of new faces on this council. Now, there are going to be several that I'm going to vote for, but I believe that there's just going to be a huge change. I think the people in this town are ready for a vote, and they need the opportunity to do that. You need to give us that. You know, I don't know if I'm going to run out of time here, but I'm going to tell you something. As a country, we just had a president that made a decision that was very decisive, very courageous, showed a lot of nerve, and the commentators on Meet the Press said that that defines leadership. You need to exhibit some leadership in regards to the issues that face this city. We can't continue to just dig down into the bottom of the budget looking for every nickel and dime. You know, you've got to get off the dime and get out of the business.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, you're next.
What do you think?
I think the reason, I agree with Councilman Slater and Councilman McKinnis, I think we do need a, well, basically, I, well, I think we need a full-service library. But I think the issue is really a moral issue, and that it's really the opportunity for our youth, for people to reflect, to, you know, assess knowledge, learn and grow. I also believe that it's an economic issue, because, you know, as the economy gets worse, people aren't going to be going very far, so they're going to want to come back to the library. And that's the second thing, too. And also, it's cheaper in my mind to go to the library and spend $200 to go to Birmingham or $100 somewhere else that, and I, when people begin to realize what's going on, I'm almost positive they would support that. And also, one last thing. A member of Robert Kennedy once said, he said that you should always fight for your ideas, since you may not always be right, but you should always fight for your ideas. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan Brake is our next speaker.
Let me point out for those speakers that come after me that you are entitled by State law to have a full five minutes for speaking at this meeting. It doesn't have to wait for the next meeting. I have kind of some rambling remarks.
Go ahead.
Gilvin Minnies, I clearly said you've got to follow your own rules, ma'am. I can say some things that you councilmembers can't say to the staff. I'm going to observe some things that were said here earlier that you probably feel like you can't. Fund balance keeps being talked about as though it's some kind of a fund, and my understanding is it isn't. It's just what's left in your checking account in terms of the way we live our lives in the real world. So, it's not like this money has to be taken out of this sacred saving place and put back into the pot of what the city lives on. It is the fund, the pot that the city lives on, just like we live out of our checking accounts. So, the whole notion that somehow there's this formal money that this, it's a horrible thing to take it out and it has to be put back in to be kept at some certain level, that's just, that's budget people talking. There is no reason in the world that we couldn't decide to fund the library out of fund balance and let this future money that we can't take into account yet pay for it. What I'm trying to address is the concern, the subliminal view, the concern that somehow that somehow we have to budget for the anticipated cut in state funding. We have to budget for the anticipated removal of personal property tax. That really is on businesses, not on people, but it's called personal property tax. Yet somehow we can't budget for the anticipated 10% or 8% or 7% reduction coming from the contract negotiations with these big unions. I haven't heard any of you press for a real explanation of that distinction that somehow is holding up more money than the whole cost of the library for a year at its present reduced funding level, which looks like 2.3 million when you look at the budget, but it's really about 1.7 million per year. Because the difference being that mysterious computer charge and the $200,000 charge of keeping a library maintained regardless of whether it's open or not. So that's the real number. The difference between keeping it open and keeping it closed is 1.7 million a year, not 2.3. So that reduces by nearly a quarter the cost of keeping the library open at the level we've grown accustomed to over the last year. And I would urge you, that's the level to set out of existing funding. There's room there to do it. And let the community debate, whether it's August or November or where it comes, be around what, if any, higher level of funding and higher level of services, higher level of quality of library that we want to have. Skipping around a little bit, I'm just following my notes. Your own expert, Mr. Seropoulos, whatever his name was with the survey, told you you probably couldn't win an August election. We paid $22,000 to get that man's opinion. Sounds sort of like an illegal campaign expense, but regardless, he told you you couldn't win an August election, that November was the place to go. And you're totally ignoring it. Somehow it has to be August rather than November. I've already mentioned somehow we have to anticipate for the state changes, but we don't have to anticipate for labor negotiations. These computers in the library, us sitting out here in the real world heard you say it costs $3,000 per computer in the library. And we got there somehow. There's 67 public computers and a total of 108 computers. Are there really 40 computers being used by a staff of six or eight now?
No, there's.
Could somebody, I'm, I, yeah, sorry, Kathy. Some of you could ask a question like this.
Okay. Mr. Brake, I have to cut you off because it is 8 o'clock.
I have more remarks, but later on, see you later.
The Open Meetings Act states that we have to do reasonable accommodation for public comment. And so we will.
Point of order.
We will, excuse me, we will.
Point of order, Carrie. It's a procedural privilege.
Yes, go ahead.
I actually want you to explain why we cannot sit here and continue to take public comment. And when you do that, can you please explain why we moved in here and we don't even have enough seats to accommodate the people?
Mrs. Breth, I mean, would you explain why we have to cut off our meeting at 8 o'clock? Special meeting.
The reason the meeting has to be called at 8 o'clock is because the meeting was scheduled initially with time constraints from 6 to 8 o'clock. And that was by council motion.
And the second part, which is why we moved in here? Because with reasonable accommodation, we've got people standing in the back here, out in the hallway.
Yes, well, it's 8 o'clock. We're going to adjourn. And I've got the cards. I'll call on you people when we get into the other meeting. Public comment comes right up at the beginning. Meeting is adjourned.